Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the August 24th meeting, I'm sorry, the October 24th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Calo has our dog today. Actually, it's a puppy, which is unusual. He usually gets the big ones, and they usually save the cute little ones for me, but he must like Ted better this week.
Wow. I thought maybe they'd pour fertilizer on her so she'd grow a little bit. I've never had a dog this small before. Our featured dog is about a three-month-old female bloodhound mix. She's extremely friendly. Come here, come look, look, come here. Yeah, look at that face.
Oh, she's so cute.
Commissioner Williams said he'd consider taking her home, so. She'll be available for adoption at 3:00 on Saturday. Stop by, she'll make a great pet for someone. Come on. Come on.
She got some paws on her.
Actually, I think I will be down there at 3:00.
Yeah?
Yeah. Now, my son's been wanting a smaller dog. We have a Bernice, and just a little too big for him, so.
Oh, good. I keep saying August. I want to go back to August, I guess, instead of October.
The weather's good.
But we have weather like August almost this week.
Yeah.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
At 9:45, Mr. Bailey from Soloway's will give an announcement on American Recycles, under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the service sheet for employees within jurisdictions in Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a number of personnel issues with respect to hiring at Job and Family Services that I need the Board to review. Also, if you wish to discuss our ongoing labor negotiations, we have several contracts that are open right now. Both of those topics are allowable for executive session discussion, so it actually, to conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into executive session and talk about those items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Apprehend. Waive the reading of the same County Commissioners' meeting minutes of October 17.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Award the elevator maintenance contract to Coney, Inc., Brexville for various county buildings effective retroactive to October 1st, 2012, for three years. This will be paid from the account Building Grounds, Building Maintenance, an amount of $2,095 per month, with an annual adjustment based on labor costs and contains a 90-day written cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Amend jointly with the City of Lorraine the Development Agreement with South Shore Community Development Corporation to repurpose certain funds for continued operations of St. Joe's Community Center in Lorraine, Ohio.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Well, actually, I was wanted to ask to have this put on hold for a week. I've been playing phone tag with the developer. He's actually out of the state right now, working on other projects. But the funding, the $360,000, and we just want to kind of give the details so everyone knows where this is at.
Can we bring Doug up, if we're going to have?
Yeah, Doug, please come up.
Doug Rango for Lorraine Community Development.
Yeah. The $360,000 was money that was given from St. Joe's, from Mercy's, to South Shore Community Development Center, which basically operates the St. Joe's facility in the City of Lorraine. The money was originally given for a match of a grant. The City of Lorraine went to Mercy and asked them to allow that money to go into either operational costs for $120,000, which Mercy gave to South Shore Community Development in January of this year. That money's sitting in an escrow account that the City of Lorraine's maintaining, correct, Doug?
$120,000 is sitting in escrow currently.
You'll get another $120,000 in January 2013 and also in '14.
Correct.
So, last week, we went through and we negotiated with the state. We negotiated with the state. They get the debt that was guaranteed by the City of Lorraine and the county, a $1.35 million. Was able to get that reduced to $850,000, so about a $500,000 savings, split by the city and the county. So $425 for the county, and then $425 for the City of Lorraine. Now, if South Shore would have failed, we would have had to pay $675,000 to the State of Ohio. And ORA, which was the managing group of South Shore, came in and said, hey, the center is under fiscal emergency, looks like it's going to close. So we took a look at it, we negotiated it, and we were able to reduce that to $425,000. Now, with that being done, if it stays open and is successful, which I believe everyone hopes it will be, the City of Lorraine will get its money back, one from the $360,000, because it's going to go towards operating expenses, which utilities are currently in the city's name, so that's going to help them out. But the $425,000 for the city's investment in the South Shore, they're going to get repaid through income tax. And also, if the property turns over to a private developer, they will get additional property tax unless some type of agreements worked out where the property tax is forgiven for so many years.
Well, that would be depending, in or of John, if it were a nonprofit still, but if it goes to private developers and for profit, we both benefit.
Right. Well, we benefit, small, but 1.6 inside.
Still making it clear, but.
Yeah. But the big one is the income tax that they're going to get. So, taking a look at this, how can we make the center successful? I think giving the $120,000 for operational costs and amending the agreement to allow them to use the remaining $240 for operational, and possibly a matching grant to demolish the old park. Because the plan is to demolish the St. Joe's with the VAS and then move the VA into the new location. Now, with that, we're creating a partnership, and the Lorraine County taxpayers have invested $425,000 into South Shore to keep it, to improve the community. What I would like to do is hold off on approving this amendment and have Mr. Cortez work on our behalf of the Board of Commissioners to work with a revenue-sharing agreement, so we can create a fair and balanced solution that's going to benefit all parties, where we would benefit by getting half of the income tax that's going to be generated from St. Joe's, to pay back to Lorraine County taxpayers their $425,000. I'm not asking for interest on it or additional fees. I'm just saying, let's create a partnership. We both invested $425,000, a total of $850,000 of taxpayer money into this project. The city will get their money back through the income tax. If, based off the numbers, $100,000 for just over four years. If we split that number, takes eight years, the county would get paid, the center will be successful, and you won't have a white elephant in the city of Lorraine. So, I'm asking the Board of Commissioners, who'll support me on this, hold off on the amendment. They can go through and you can get all your, everyone else, you said the six parties needed to sign off, so the county would be the last one. And then we can work out an agreement, again, a partnership with the City of Lorraine, to split the revenue in order to pay back to taxpayers, so. How do you feel on that?
I'm willing to hold off on this until later time and see if we can work something out.
Would you be okay with having Mr. Cortez work out an agreement? Mr. Cortez, I know you do a lot of work during the meetings, but want to bring you in this because you're about to.
I heard the whole thing. I heard the whole thing.
To work out an agreement to try to create revenue sharing based off income tax with the city of Lorraine.
Now, are we talking about an income tax that's based upon current revenues as a baseline, or?
That was our original, those were the discussions that were upheld a year ago, starting with, based on what they receive as it is currently, and then everything above and beyond, a percentage split. That was in discussions over a year ago. Doug wanted to say something, so I guess we'd be. Yeah. Again, remember, you know, this thing has, continues to have, the shortfalls have gotten a little smaller, and with the $120,000, we've got winter coming upon us. And the next council meeting, I believe, is Monday, November 5th, I believe. So, in going back, you know, for us to go through this process, it's going to take us a while to get all of this approved, negotiated, and then get the money into there, there isn't money to make sure to get the boilers going on this. So, what ends up happening, if those boilers don't go, it impacts those tenants and could potentially shut this thing down. I don't necessarily have an issue with that, but also recognizing the fact that the city has put in more money out of its, you know, out of its various programs into this, and I would want to make sure that you understand that if we're going to do something like this, there are other obligations that we're going to begin throwing into the mix. So, and again, that's something that's going to have to be.
What obligation are you talking about? That's kind of like an open-ended statement.
Well, the city, the city put in, when it was two years ago, two and a half years ago, when it, when the city took over management on a temporary basis, the city put 150, actually $200,000 of various city funds into this. When IRG came to the table, the city threw in another $250,000 as a working capital loan. At this point in time, knowing that the facility has been struggling, you know, we weren't really looking to get that back.
Yeah, but I think what they're suggesting here is at the same time the city was receiving the income tax from the jobs created over there. So, if you want to throw other stuff into the mix, I said there's certainly enough on this side to put back in the mix to offset that.
Sure. We can certainly take a look at this and negotiate this.
And I think for a city council, if it is a, you know, such a pressing issue, they can actually go through and have an emergency meeting to talk about this, too. I mean, that is an option, because if it's that pressing, then go through and create an emergency meeting.
If you look at the income tax generated from the jobs, I think it'll end up probably being a wash for the city with what they've invested over the time into St. Joe's. I'm just trying to be above the table with this. I'm not suggesting whether they should have or shouldn't have, but the city made those investments in a different administration years ago.
Correct.
So, you know, how far back do you want to go, and how many things you want to put on the table from four years ago, five years ago, seven years ago? I can go back long enough to tell you when the county put in quite a few resources over there. So, all I was asking the Board here was, where's the baseline for where you want to establish the discussion points for income tax sharing? And income tax sharing is not a new issue in the City of Lorraine. You have an income tax sharing program that you do with businesses right now to create jobs there.
That is correct. And that's what we discussed, again, a year ago, was discussing doing the baseline and everything above and beyond that, and the sale of the building, also recouping some of our funds. Under the original proposal to the state, that is correct.
Right. Well, what I would prefer to do is to go through and get this money back is, there was a baseline of, what, $120,000, I believe, what was roughly?
Roughly, yes.
So, I mean, if we did that, if we just split that money of 120,000, 60, 60, you know, 50%, so we would get 60,000 of that, that's going to pay down that debt.
Well, I was actually, that's why I'm asking where the baseline is. Is the baseline that we begin anything above the 120,000?
No, I would say it would be including the 120,000.
Yeah. I don't know. I mean, in the negotiation, that was all discussed again a year ago's time. But the baseline for providing the services that they have within that amount, they have a cost on that.
But with the, are you going to still have the same baseline because you're going to be demolishing the building? How many of the people occupying the facility are going to be moving out because there's not enough?
We could establish a baseline based on historically, those tenants who remain. That, you know, we could certainly take a look at that.
Because some of those people could go to somewhere else in the City of Lorraine, not necessarily in St. Joe's.
That is correct.
Well, then, maybe what we do is we just say that the 425,000 will be paid back within eight years.
I wouldn't do it on a dollar figure if, because there is going to be a significant amount of restructuring. I would do it on a number of employees. Now, the salary's going to vary, but I would do it on an employee count, how many employees were there, and how much, because the payroll's going to be elusive. If people are moving out of the center, the baseline's going to move. So, if there's 60 jobs there now, then base it upon how many jobs are there, and take the average wage that's being paid there now, and then use that, that's a more stable point.
You can't take it all in based on past.
Right, as a unit.
Right.
So, we can see that if changes occur and it goes down to 40 jobs, we know it's going to be a while before it comes back up to 60 jobs on the average payroll wage.
My question is, whose obligation is this? Is it the City of Lorraine's obligation?
What are you asking?
If this doesn't get paid, you're talking about the City of Lorraine being obligated to the county.
Well, what it would be is, if the facility's in operation and there's income tax being generated, a portion of that would come back to the county. If the center would fail and it closes, then obviously there would be no taxes coming into the county. So, it's based on the success of the program.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look at what the county proposes, and then obviously talk to the administration and the council to see if that's something that they're going to, would be willing to take a look at doing. Just knowing that, again, we are getting close to cold weather again, and, you know, any, any long-term decision-making on this could impact that.
Let me help you with that. Let's do something here quickly that's going to resolve that issue and then give us some time to talk, okay? Because it's going to take a little while to fed out some of those issues. Why don't you bifurcate this, pass a certain amount of this 120,000 so we?
Just pass the full 120, because there's $240 laying out there after the fact.
Yeah, whatever you want to do.
That'll be discussed. If you pass the 120, they have cash flow for the center over the next two or three months, I would assume. If that's done, because then the other 240, we just don't sign off on the entire deal while we negotiate.
Yeah.
The appropriation of the other 240.
The other 120.
We're going to lose our negotiation power with this.
Why? We've got the other 240.
It's not in the bag yet, though.
Yeah. I mean, what I would prefer to do is wait, have them go through, get the approval on it. We can get something to you. Mr. Cortez, I think you could get something to them by next week.
Certainly.
And then have them go through and do an emergency council. I mean, if it's that pressing, I believe that the elected officials in the City of Lorraine would want to move on this quickly.
Well, you're still looking at, if we get it next week, we would already have passed the typical Monday meeting, and the next one would be the normal council meeting on November 5th.
Right. Do you have all the other approvals yet?
Not all of them.
So, right now, we're still waiting.
The only one we're waiting on is the state.
So, if we wait a week, and you, right now, you don't have the other approval, so if we wait a week to sign off on it, you're not going to get your money anyhow. You're not going to be able to spend it.
Tom, the only other one is IRG, and just because they're not in town. Oh, and IRG, IRG is, we're working through them. Everybody else has passed, South Shore passed it the other day. Yes. Mercy's passed, Lorraine City Council's passed. Who else was on that list? The state. The state passed, so.
What do you think about half of that 120, just doing 60,000 right now?
Let me note, the 120,000, you know, that money, getting the HVAC ready and covering shortfalls, it may last anywhere from 90 days to 180 days. If we don't move forward with this in that period of time, we're not even looking at the next 240, because chances are this closes down.
I got to take a look at the actual agreement, because I thought the entire agreement was, they were allowing you to use the $120,000 and up to the next $240,000.
I've only asked for the 120. We're not even discussing the 240 yet, until we see that there is going to be progress here made.
Let me do this again. You put an imminent hazard on the table, the boilers. I understand boilers. We have lots of them here, too. I got to tell you, getting them up and getting somebody in there and getting them started up is going to take a little bit of time, and we're at the end of October. You know, you want that equipment running before the middle, at least before the middle of November. Well, I doubt we're going to get a freeze that's going to damage the building, but it's going to get cold, man. You have tenants at the building.
Correct. There's children in there, there's children in there with the daycare, I mean. You've got the students in there, they've got to get it up and fired up, I mean.
So, you're saying that South Shore has no operational costs or cash flow in order to provide the service right now? That if you don't get the $120,000 right away, South Shore's going to close?
There's bills that are outstanding right now, that, you know, how much longer are some of these vendors going to wait? You know, this, this whole facility continues to churn, while we have reduced those costs, there's still some costs that are a little, they're getting smaller. The shortfall's getting smaller. But without, without this thing continuing to operate and these tenants beginning to leave, this does become a shutdown. Without this 120,000, I mean, it may be able to stay operational through November, but they won't be able to turn on the boilers. Right, because you have to pay the HVAC pump. I'm sure that has to be paid from early in the year, too. Correct. They're going to ask for money so you can get them back in the building.
What is the, this going to cost, you feel, for that? I can't see it costing $120,000.
No, no. You're talking about the HVAC?
Right.
Yeah, no, I don't, do I know what it's going to cost? No. We're going to be meeting with HVAC contractors here, you know, until we get this $120,000 passed, there's no reason for us to even get involved if we're talking about a shutdown. And if we pass just a partial, and you've got to go back to all the other partners to agree on just the partial, or you're agreed up to the 120? Yeah. I mean, best case, best case is, we use this 120,000, we bridge the gap, and maybe, maybe by getting a little bit more operationally efficient, we may be at a break-even. That's best case. And then we don't need to worry about dealing with the other 240. Again, maybe.
Maybe.
Can we hold this till next week, give everybody an opportunity to sit down, and you have your answers on the HVAC? Mr. Cortez hopefully can make an arrangement and go sit with the City of Lorraine and see what we can come up with as far as a revenue-sharing opportunity.
Well, I can, but, and I wouldn't suggest that we couldn't try to get something done. I'd still like to see this board pass something to get these boilers up and running, so we're working towards that goal. Regardless of whether the building is going to be.
We can do whatever you'd like.
Yeah, but I know, but this agreement calls for a whole agreement, approving a whole agreement, does it not? I mean, it's either, it's not an all-or-nothing agreement? Can we just do 60?
Well, I think the other parties agreed up to the 120. If the Board of Commissioners approves 60, I don't think you'd have to go back at that point, correct? Because you'd still have the clearance of 60 with all the partners. Well, then, and if we go to use the next 60, I would have to likely, now the city has agreed to use the 120, yeah, we'd have to come back here. For the other 60. You know, anybody, the Board has agreed to allow the reuse of the 120. Well, we would have to come back here for the, if we were to not do the 120 here.
Yeah, I would agree to the 60,000. I think that's going to put a little bit of pressure on all parties to get together, work out a deal to get this done.
Okay, I'll change my motion to reflect, instead of the 120, that it would be $60,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you. And just, Mr. Cortez, you're clear on the objective of the Board?
Clear as mud.
[laughing]
The, the, I'll get with them, but you got, you got some complicated issues on the table here. They're not, they're not simple issues, and while we can have those discussions, the parameters that need to be framed out, I think are going to take, are going to take some time.
Right.
And, but I will introduce concepts. I will send out some correspondence to the administration this afternoon detailing that the Board wants to enter into a revenue-sharing agreement with regard to income tax with the jobs that are created from the South Shore project. The, but my question is, and I asked it earlier, but I didn't really get any concise answer from the Board, is what's the baseline? Where does it begin? And I can give you units of measurement that make a little bit of sense, because they're going to be moving back and forth as they have demolition and construction. But what is, what is that baseline that the Board's going to be comfortable with? I sure hate to go to the table and negotiate something, have come back here and then find the Board unhappy with that. That just starts the process.
I think what you mentioned earlier, as far as how many employees are there now, and average of those salaries, and how many are retained after it stays open?
And then you would sit down and figure what a baseline is.
Right.
Based on how many are left in that building, which is like the original agreement we negotiated in the past, and discussion points to split anything above whatever that baseline might be on growth.
Not above. Not above the baseline, what, everybody that's there would be split in half.
Let me detail a couple potential scenarios where I'll get them to you.
The discussions we had a year, I was going over with discussions we had a year ago that the Board had talked about here. Lorraine had said, whatever the base is, anything above that and beyond for growth. And they would split, because they still have cost of operating, whatever they do,
And they would split, 'cause they still have cost of operating, whatever they do, you know, the amount of police protection, fire protection, there's a cost into having a facility of that size. And then we were gonna, we were going to take a number above and beyond that amount.
Yeah. Now, for me, I would say we could do the numbers and basically whatever that income tax would be based off the number of employees, it would be a fifty-fifty split then.
I don't agree with that.
That's the way I would prefer to see it. Well, that's my preference here. Now, Ms. Skowski?
I'd like to see just a base figure on when the building is done with the developer and then taking a portion of that money towards the debt service. Then that'd be four years or eight years, but it takes twelve years to pay it off.
To me, we just take the, what's there to income tax and we just split it. And then once it's paid off, we're done. They're done paying us and they get the full hundred percent. So I guess, Ms. Skowski, we just need your opinion to give Mr. Cordes the direction on which way to go.
My baseline was based on what the income tax would generate should the center stay open. Not, and I'm not talking about, you know, jobs that would entail the demolition and, you know, rebuilding of whatever they're gonna, not those jobs, but the jobs that are actually...
You're talking about the permanent jobs?
The permanent jobs that are in the facility. What that generates, split that in half.
Yeah, it sounds like we're in agreement, basically.
It sounds like you're just taking it all in whole.
It'll pay off faster and then they'll get a hundred percent faster.
We'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Okay. Now, are you still muddy?
And you still need the portion of the sixty, right?
Are you still muddy?
No, but it is gonna be like running up a hill with a knapsack full of rocks, okay? But that's fine.
Well, let me know, I can get behind you, push you up that hill.
You have to catch me, you'll have to catch me first.
That's true, he is a lot bigger.
I did.
Okay, are we done with that?
Yeah, I'm just gonna vote, I'm just gonna take a vote.
Just to vote?
Call for the question?
Okay. Ms. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Approve.
You're done, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't get discussion, excuse me, we didn't get the discussion about the payback and the loans and the grants, which I want a clarification on.
Well, you wanna do that?
Doug, don't run off, 'cause what we talked about the other day when I spoke to the mayor, I'd seen him at the Biden event. Explain how the grant and the forgivable loan is that you spoke about a week ago, so everybody sort of gets a handle on it.
The EPA one, right? Oh, yeah. That what we're using is, the city was granted a million dollars from US EPA to establish a revolving loan fund. Basically, what we have is the capacity, I believe it's eight hundred and sixty thousand is our capacity. What we would do is, we would put a loan in that would replace the mercy money. It is a loan. However, the, our agreement allows us to forgive the loan or grant it to a nonprofit entity up to two hundred thousand dollars per project site. So we could make up to two hundred thousand dollars of this, a grant. If we were to go above that amount, what would likely happen is, we would have a loan on that and eventually would seek to get repaid.
What is the criteria for going from a loan to a grant?
The, basically, it would be my board's ability to approve that because any underwriting for these loans would be done through my board.
Okay, which is separate from city council.
That is correct. It is a separate self-sustaining board. So it would be, I would underwrite the loan. And again, at this point in time, the first two hundred thousand dollars of this would likely be forgivable. I wanna make sure that we try and keep any loans off of the property to the extent that we can. It may unfortunately be unavoidable. If we can do it, we're certainly gonna trump to do that, seeing as we just got the state off of this facility.
Is that understood now? Because you had questions last time.
Well, yeah, because, yeah, we were going through, you stated a grant and a loan, and I went through and I actually took a look at it to find out what you were doing.
Yeah, no, no, and I can, you know, if you want, I can show you later what the loan and where we've got, it's right within our assistance agreement with US EPA. Alright.
Okay.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
That's one of the reasons I wanted you to explain that, that we had to move into that position to get the teardown done.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Approve an interim contract with Maximus for the 2012 indirect cost allocation plan for 2014, the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Under community development, award contract to Burnett Septic Service Inc., La Grange, the amount of ten thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and twenty-five cents, which includes a contingency for any unproceeding change orders. This grant assistance is from CDVG FY11 for William Bocop at 105 Yonka Court, Carlisle, to replace the septic system. Nine invitations were sent, two received, this being most responsive compliance specifications will be paid from home repair account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution 10764, adopted November 3, 2010, awarding contract to CT Consultants Manor in the amount of seventy-seven thousand three hundred and fifty to provide professional services to administer and implement Lorraine County's FY10 chip grant. Said amendment is to increase the amount of five thousand and paid from the professional services count. Said increase is due to the remaining chip home dollars available on the grant for additional work on RRS inspections.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Under children and family, Amendment Resolution 124477, adopted July 18, 2012, approving interim renewal contracts for Help Me Go contracts. Said amendments are to reflect Catholic Charities Community Services from twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and six cents to thirty thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. Neighborhood Alliance from twenty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-two cents to twenty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents. And Larry's City Health from twenty-five, twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-two cents to fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety cents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Under Golden Acres, award renewal contracts to Fiskin Corp., Bradview Heights, Ohio, for elevator maintenance effective November 1, 2012, for three years with a four percent annual cap each year. One for the passenger elevator full service in the amount of two hundred and nineteen dollars per month, and then the freight and dumb waiter in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine dollars per month.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Under transit, authorize various filings of applications with ODOT for fiscal year thirteen transportation assistance grants, which may include the Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program and the Urban Transit Program. Authorize county administrator to execute all necessary documents on behalf of Board of Prosecutors' Approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Submit the federal grant applications with FTA and other federal agencies for fiscal year thirteen transportation assistance grants. Authorize county administrator to execute all necessary documents on behalf of Board of Prosecutors' Approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Under developmental disabilities, Amendment Resolution 12653, adopted October 3, 2012, request on Lorraine County Auditor pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705.03 to certify Lorraine County Commissioners the total current tax valuation of the county and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated for five years for a 1.6875 renewal and a 1.6875 replacement on May 7, 2013 ballot. Said amendment is to reflect that this is in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 5705.19L and 5705.222.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Do we wanna do Keith now?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Good morning, Commissioners. Keith Bailey, Solid Waste Director. We've had quite a few successes at the center lately recently. In September, we did twelve hundred and ten ag tires, Ag Tire Collection. On the thirteenth of October, we had a shred-it day and we did two hundred and forty-two vehicles. And now, this next year in 2013, we're gonna create a shred-it day calendar, which we'll post to our 2013 special events ahead of time for a calendar for the year so people can plan around our calendar. Today, Kim, to talk to you today about America Recycles Day. America Recycles Day is November fifteenth of this year. America Recycles Day is a national campaign of Keep America Beautiful, which Lorraine County Beautiful has been affiliate for seventeen years. Their goal is to increase recycling awareness, motivate people to recycle more by providing and demonstrate their commitment. We are proud to announce a new partnership with Habitat for Humanity to accept materials for the campaign. We will be accepting countertops at the center, cabinets, windows, doors, light fixtures, hardware, refrigerator, stoves. They must be in working condition. Items will be dropped off the center at 540 South Abbey Road at our regular hours from 12 to 6 on Monday and Wednesday, and from 9 to 6 p.m. on Saturday. We ask that people donating items be prepared to help unload those items, as some of them are quite large. At Habitat Humanity Restore, you can also drop off your items at 214 East 34th Street in Lorraine. Restore is open on Thursday through Saturday from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. and can be contacted at 440-244-1046. The collection center will accept these items till November 17. However, Restore accepts these items year-round. Profits from the Restore are used to support Habitat's Humanities Program for building homes for Lorraine County residents and promote the three Rs of recycling. And we're very happy with our partnership, new partnership with Habitat for Humanity. Questions, Commissioners?
Did you say the items dropped off at our collection center will be taken to Restore then?
Restore, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And be sold, yes.
All right. It's a great program, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Nice job, Keith.
Do you wanna have Mrs. Johnson come up for Brentwood?
Do you want to do Brentwood?
Jim, do you wanna give us an update? Did you take a trip out to Brentwood Lake? Mrs. Johnson's here, if you wanna have her come up and...
Spent a week there, one afternoon.
A week? One afternoon?
It's our week, one afternoon.
The, it was a very interesting afternoon. Commissioner Williams also attended, as did several members of Carlisle Township with their staff and elected officials and staff and members from the county engineer's office. So we had quite a passe of folks tramping around various properties and looking over various elements. They were having a meeting and they were gonna get back to me after that meeting, and I don't know if I am to assume that you're relaying what happened at that meeting or somebody else is going to, but the ball was tentatively in, on their side of the court after we left our physical inspection of the area.
Just one quick thing, I wanna thank Ken Cardney too, 'cause he was out there and actually got a gate put up, so, for the residents out there for the facility, county facility. So, thank you, Ken.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes, Karen Johnson, 33 Lakeview Drive. We met on Monday, and by the way, thank you for the gate. It is noticed and we're hoping that also helps prevent some cars driving down there and partying. So it looks like a nice sturdy gate. The, we had a meeting on Monday night and we had about, about fifty residents show up.
Excuse me, Karen, was this a township meeting?
I'm sorry, this was a meeting of the residents. What I did was, I had a few residents get together after, after we had met and after we had talked, and we put together a very easy-to-do survey as far as to get feedback on what people wanted and kinda threw together a meeting that if anybody had questions, that they could come back. And I would like to say this is the best survey response we've ever had because we almost got feedback back from about half of the people, which is more than we've ever had before. You have to consider that there are a lot of empty houses there and we don't really expect to get feedback from the empty houses. So anyway, we kind of put together a rough graph. I don't really know how to go through all the data, but it seems like the majority of the residents, a hundred and three were the number that we got back, the majority of the residents would like it to remain private. And one of the main reasons is they're afraid of increased crime. They're afraid that it will invite the public into their backyards, and I didn't know it, but on the other side of Edgewood, some people have been getting broken into. One single woman had her door broken down, like kicked in. They're coming in the back and it's in the back corner, and with that road out, it takes the police longer to get to her house. In fact, this apparently has happened twice. And she came to us at the meeting and said that the sheriff said that the next time she calls in, they're gonna start charging her, because I guess they're expecting the robber to be standing there. So anyway, I'm not really sure what's going on there, but there is something going on, and that was 108 Edgewood Drive. But, okay, so we have three-quarters of the people that would like it to remain private. It seems like more people would want the lake back, but there was quite a few people that said that they would like it developed, especially maybe with a pond, maybe with a walking trail, something that might benefit more of the neighborhood as a whole rather than just the lake. So it'd be something that we could kind of pursue to see what maybe the options are there. Most people did not want it to be left as weeds, even if they were mowed. However, there was a strong concern that, of the current safety issue. And the majority of people felt that the first step would be the mowing and the grading to get the standing water out of there and to get the weeds down. And in fact, a petition was started at the actual meeting. It has not gone down around the whole neighborhood yet, but I at least wanted to give you the start of that petition so that everybody knows that these safety issues are number one right now. And my husband can, can give you all copies of that. There was, the number one thing that people want to see back, though, is the road and bridge, even over the lake. They consider that a safety issue and they consider that, that they wouldn't have moved into the neighborhood if especially that back half didn't have that road. And in addition, it's creating more traffic in the front half of the neighborhood, where people are also concerned that if something happens at that one entrance, like we've had a lot of sewer projects going on, and the traffic's been darn right dangerous in that area, because there have been trucks parked on the side of the road, up and down the only entrance to the neighborhood, and around five o'clock, when you come in and somebody's coming out, I almost got clipped head-on at the corner. So this, this is really a safety issue, having just one, one entrance. It's also, it seems to be a rub for the, for the residents that the road and bridge are not considered dedicated. And I don't know if the commissioners have actually even seen the road dedications and actually read them themselves. Now, Mr. Ennis had, had mentioned to me that he didn't believe the second road dedication actually was properly done, because some of the, I guess there was letters that were received from the engineer's office, happened to be the same day as the commissioners approved the dedication. I don't know, Mr. Ennis, if that's accurate, is what I'm saying, but that was the same situation on the first road dedication. And I wanna tell you that if the road and the bridge aren't dedicated over the dam, neither are the second half of the roads in Brentwood, because it dedicated four roads, that second dedication. And I don't understand how all of the second roads were dedicated, except for that one piece, which was also called out in the dedication.
Mr. Ennis? Are you able to respond to that now, or?
I mean, it's a lengthy legal discussion. No, I'm not gonna even attempt to broach it.
Okay.
But anyway, I'd like you at least have a copy of the two-road dedication so that everybody can read them, because we really don't understand it. And, but the other thing is that the residents didn't do anything wrong here. We are not responsible for getting our roads dedicated. We're not responsible for getting our bridge dedicated. We are responsible for paying our taxes. We paid our taxes. Our taxes should have covered our road and our bridge. This is not a private neighborhood. And our residents are seeing that our taxes are paying for other people's roads, so why aren't their taxes paying for our roads? I mean, this doesn't seem to be a two-way street. And what I'm concerned about is that what actually could have happened is that elected officials came and went over the years, and for some reason, that road dedication was misfiled, misshuffled, whatever, because the county didn't even have the road dedication until I personally found it. And it wasn't easy to find because it was not on the index. Like, when you look at microfilm, things are indexed. Your index didn't have it. And I sat there for a week in the records building until I found it, 'cause I was looking at 1953 is when this started, and I had to get to 1959 before I found the road dedication.
Well, can I do some clarification real quick, Karen?
Yes.
The road dedication was to the township, not to the county. The county just does it by process. I just wrote it here, it's to turn it over to the township.
The township, but there is a bridge involved on, on portion of that road. And it was, the Lorraine County Engineers did have a, a letter that, that they accepted them.
Accepted the bridge.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to clarify that, that's why you kept saying dedicated, dedicated, dedicated.
It's a portion of the road.
Correct.
When you read it, it says between area number four and the portion of waterfall previously.
Right.
Dedicated. It specifically calls out that portion that is over the dam.
Correct. Correct. I see that right here. Between lots of three.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That's that specific portion. So anyway, that is, that's a big beef with the neighborhood right now. That's like the number one issue. And if it did get lost in the shuffle, I mean, in school, I learned that ignorance is no excuse, so just not knowing about it doesn't mean that it wasn't dedicated. So anyway, we would like to know, I mean, our residents would like to have actual proof. If this, for some reason, wasn't dedicated, we'd like to see the paperwork and not like an opinion. We'd like to see that.
Hey, Barry, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but if you could come up here. Barry was also at the viewing when, well, and so was Mr. Ennis, when we went out there to see the lake bed. And I know for one of the concerns with the traffic, trustees did have a solution for that, correct, Barry?
What was that?
The traffic issue going into Brentwood that you guys had, what you thought would be a solution to ease the accidents out there?
Yeah. Our road department, Bob Shore, came up with like three different entrances, two of them from Robson Road, and then one coming around, but it's on Spitzer property to the south of the present exit and entrance of Edgewood. So, but those were just his ideas that could happen. So, you know, I thought we were here to come up with the solution of how to fix the water problem. And we do need to, you know, look at the bridge or another entrance and exit, because I did receive two calls this week on Monday, and both of them were concerned about emergency vehicles, or if there was a disaster in the area, how everybody could get out one entrance. So that is a big concern, and we really do need to work on that. You know, as for the dam, we've been down that road for years. I can tell you this, our road department started plowing the road just for the safety of the residents. We maintain none of that road over the bridge, ever, because it was private property, and it was never dedicated. And that's all I got to tell you about, you know, about the road. So, you know, Jerry knows, we've been down that road. Is it, was it dedicated? Was it not dedicated? Whose property it is? So I think we need to come to, you know, a solution for the water drainage and for a second outlet. Other than that, you know, it's private property. The homeowners association says it's Spitzer's. I talked to GRDD this Monday, and their position has always been, it was turned over to the homeowners association way back when.
All right. Well, and we know that it doesn't appear to be dedicated because they're paying taxes on it.
Well, he explained to me that there's a little portion of property that Spitzer's owned by the lake, but somehow, the legal description on that little property encompasses the whole lake. Okay?
Yeah, there was one property that, I thought they changed that, though.
So, so anyway, you know, what I'm saying is, we got to come up with a solution for the water. We got to come up with a solution for, to make another entrance and exit for that property for them, for safety reasons. Okay? Whatever happens, either the homeowners' association and Spitzer's have got to fight this out, whose property it is. It's not the townships, it's not the counties. So, I mean, I'm willing to take a look at doing, can Carney come up with a good solution? He's not here today, or they're not here, but, you know, they come up with a good solution.
Yeah, we can take care of the stormwater issue fairly, I won't say simply, because right now, it's a little soft still out there, but it's getting to be a good time of the year to get out there and cut those channels, widen the channel out on the mainstream, and cover up the, take care of the outfalls, because they need some grates, and we need to put some channels with some rocks out to the stream bed.
Right.
Because the original stormwater system was made to flow right into the, right into the lake at the shoreline of the lake. Those things can be done, and we're willing to accomplish those things and get them done pretty quickly. That'll take care of a lot of the pooling and standing water that's occurring close into the property, properties. Now, let's also point out that there is, all those homes around the lake dumping water right in the same area from all their downspouts, and a lot of the impervious surfaces have drains that have been put in, that's taken the water right into the lake. We can move our stormwater, but all of those discharges, and people don't understand how much water comes off of roofs and driveways and et cetera, and is going to be pumped out there. So while we can move our water better to the original stream bed, those homeowners are going to have to deal with their discharging of water into that area themselves. So they're still going to have pooling water and things like that. That's going to be a neighborhood approach to that, because we don't have any jurisdiction on that drainage. The, so we're ready to accomplish that fairly rapidly, but we have to know who owns the property.
Right. When I talked to a resident that's moved in in 1966, she started paying dues to the homeowners' association, okay? She continued for all the time she lived there until sometime that the organization quit collecting dues. But the homeowners' association, which she started paying the dues, took care of bringing in sand every year for the beach, took care of putting chemicals in the water for weed control and algae, and also maintaining the play area. So the homeowners' association did take care of that at one time. So, you know, like I said, it's going to be a legal battle.
Yeah.
I don't know who owns it. You know, the homeowners say they don't own it. Spitzer's have said from the beginning, they turn it over to the homeowners' association. The charter, I guess, dissolved somewhere in between. So it's up to the courts to decide whose property it is.
Yeah, I know right now that you guys have letters basically.
The court has already, we have a settlement agreement that is very clear that the homeowners' association doesn't own it. And we also have paperwork where Spitzer gave us permission and even encouraged us to treat water and carry in sand and maintain the play area. It's very clear that this was never a homeowners' association created by Spitzer, and was never a homeowners' association created by the developer. And we also warned the county that when the lake was taken out, that our stormwater was being dumped into it. And Mr. Ennis told us that our stormwater was grandfathered, so I will not be paying a separate fee or doing anything to channel my water that's dumping into that lake bed now, because it's grandfathered.
The, Karen, you got to calm down a little bit. You're already paying for stormwater drainage by a fee to the stormwater district, and it's on your tax duplicate. So, everybody in the unincorporated area is paying that, and that's why we're out there.
A dollar fifty a month, Karen.
Yes, but you had just said that the people around the lake are going to have to figure out how they're going to deal with their stormwater. You just said that.
I said, you didn't hear me correctly. I said the water coming off of their properties. I did say the outfalls that are coming from the street, that's an outfall, that we have channeled into there, we're going to take care of. I did just say that. But you were standing there, as well as several other people, and we saw all the tile dumping out from all those homes, from all the downspouts and deck drains that are in driveways and so forth. Those things are dumping out into the lake, and those are not our responsibility. Those are on-site responsibilities of the owner.
And that's what I'm referring to. And that's what we brought up to Mr. Ennis, and he told us that all of our drains were grandfathered. We had this issue before the lake was drained.
I'm not saying they're not grandfathered. I'm just telling you that the water's still coming out there.
I know.
And it's still going to create the pooling and the swampy areas, not to the degree that the big outfalls are, but you're still going to have some issues. I'm not saying you can't discharge them there. I'm just indicating that we do not deal with those type of discharges from downspouts and from other drains off the property. I'm sure some people may have their property with some tile draining some of the land that's going out there. We did not inventory all of those homes around the old lake bed. But the outfalls, I think there's about 17 or 18 of them. Do you remember, Barry, what, those?
About 17 or 18, yeah.
We have them mapped, and we can channel them out to the creek bed, and we can put some rock into those channels and create a more safe way of that water not pooling up against some of the older bulkheads, and widen that stream bed out there. What's going to happen, though, when you get a lot of rain, you get a wet season, all that water coming off all those roofs and all those impervious areas going out there, still going to create marsh areas off the back of those bulkheads.
Yes, and I will be talking on that further. I do have more to say, and I also have some documents from the Blackwater River Shed people. So if I could continue, I have more information.
Oh, I just saw we were on that one-piece issue.
Well, it all ties into that one-piece of issue. How's that?
Okay.
Okay. The last part on the road. There was supposed to be a turnaround put in on Waterfall Drive. The turnaround has not been put in on Waterfall Drive.
By who, Karen? As you're saying things, by who? Who's supposed to put the turnaround in?
The county, the township, I'm not sure. One of the government entities agreed to put a turnaround.
Barry, where would you get that information from, that we were supposed to put in a turnaround?
We've been reading about it in the rural urban, that it was approved, that there was supposed to be a turnaround. I believe Mr. Ennis had something to do with it. We were waiting for Spitzer to give permission, like we usually are.
Right. The township was going to put in a turnaround, because our snowplows go down there, and then they have to back out on the 57, which is dangerous. So we have asked, and Jerry has been in contact with Spitzer's about giving us authorization, because that's their property down at the end, that little strip down there.
So you're doing it for maintenance purposes?
Exactly.
Okay. Don't run away, Barry, in case there's a question between county and township. Sorry, I know you've got a busy day to do yet, but go ahead.
But it's becoming a little bit more than maintenance purposes. The public, with their GPS is not changed, do not know that this is just a dead-end road. So they're getting increasingly frustrated, and now they have taken to turning around on the lawn of the resident at the end of the street. This isn't acceptable. They're riding across their grass. Half the time, they're in their driveway. Don't be surprised if you're given a bill to repave their driveway, because it's being used as a public access right now. People have to be able to turn around when they get to the end of the street, and these people have said that they have to wait to get into their driveway when they come home. Not only that, there's a barricade that's right next to their driveway that is unsightly, and the snow is being plowed up against it, and when the snow melts, it is flooding the residents at the end of the street. That snow, if the barricade, I guess, wasn't there, should actually be pushed off into the bluff. The other thing is that children are snowboarding down the riprap in the lake exit now, and because there is no road connecting it, children and adults are walking down that dangerous slope, which I wouldn't walk down, walking across the bottom and walking up the other side. I've also heard there's broken glass down there. So this is another problem, and that turnaround should have been done. And the residents are also requesting that when the turnaround is done, a curb be put on the edge of it, so that they, they're not riding across their lawn. And apparently, over the years, they have sent multiple letters. They gave me, they brought a stack of letters to my house, maybe five letters or something, that they had in the past sent letters to Carlisle, and nothing had been done about the turnaround. So just so you know.
Just, did you get letters on that?
No, I have not.
Can, Karen, if...
I can bring them in at some point.
Yeah, for the township, and, you know, I know Mr. Taylor and Mr. Grayton.
The letters went back to the breach time, so...
But if you could get the list for the township issues to them, I'm sure Mr. Taylor's going to take a look at it.
Correct. And like I said, we've been working on this turnaround for a long time, right, Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
But with the lake, you know, you brought up the metro parks.
Yes.
When we were out there, and I did go out and I talked to the metro parks. Right now, their interest is, I would say, minimum, if not there, just because of perception issue that they would be benefiting the entire, or just 34 residents, their home, property owners. But he does have some additional information, and they would be willing to talk to us about doing an impound, which is basically different than a dam, and it wouldn't require the ODNR approval, as long as it's below six foot. So basically, you could have a shallow lake. We would have to talk to engineering groups and everything on there. Really, what it comes down to is finding out who owns the property before we can do anything. I mean, even if we go through and resolve the issues that the county's willing to do, we have to get an agreement on...
One of the things we talked about, if I may, out there, was that we needed to know what the residents wanted us to do with the stormwater outfalls and doing that work, and whether the homeowners' association was going to be revived, and they were going to take deed to the property, and whether, or another entity was going to take deed to the property, and whether Spitzer would be willing to quick title that property over to that entity. And then we were going to deal with the stormwater issues. The, all these other issues, as we told you about the lake, they're all outside of our ability to do anything about. The, I like to stay focused on the things we can do. You know, sleigh riders and people, people are going to be people. There's nothing we can do about that. And I'm a little surprised what you say about the traffic back there, because I've lived in this county for 25 years, and I've driven by that lake, and not once have I ever driven back there. I see the lake, it was beautiful. I did have the opportunity to see it when I visited the package plant years ago, but I never went further back into the development. I was always under the perception that it was a private, a private area back there. So, you know, the amount of traffic you're talking about, I don't know why people would even go back there. It doesn't go anywhere. You can go in, you can go out, and even when it had two roads, you go in and you go out. But what we can concentrate on here is dealing with some of the stormwater issues and knowing how to get that property moved quickly, so we can get on that property quickly. The rest of those things are beyond the scope of our authority to do it.
And the, you know, the impound I just found out about, we could talk about, and I would be willing to work with the, you know, Brentwood residents to try to come up with some type of solution.
Is there a cost to that, Tom? I didn't understand the impound. Was the metro parks talking about doing it?
No, not the metro parks. They're saying whoever owns the property, you could do an impound. It's basically a dam under six feet.
Okay.
So you can create a shallow lake.
It's more, it's more, almost like retention area.
Yeah, retention area. Okay, thank you.
It wouldn't solve the road problem, and, yeah.
The road-in problem, you said?
No, the road problem.
Road, no, that wouldn't solve that issue.
Right. But I also want you to know that we found a document that was created, I believe for the county, yesterday, and the Black River Watershed Action Plan. This was created December 30th of 2011. And we talked about nobody really knowing that the problems were in Brentwood, and lo and behold, the Black River Watershed Action Plan, which was created by Christina Zindarsik, and there are a whole bunch of names that I'm familiar with. Nancy Funey, Betty Blair was involved, Carl Snyder.
Well, we produced this document. This is out of our community development department, and we, we actually, the watershed coordinator, when we have that position filled, works for us.
Okay, so I want to just read the one page that I copied here. It's a 300 and some-page document. And that is, there are 165 known dams within the Black River Watershed. The majority of these dams are privately owned and designated for recreational use to create small impoundments for fish boating and swimming. There are 23 known public dams. In 2009, a dam which created Brentwood Lake, a .046 kilometer impound, square kilometer impoundment in Carlisle Township, was removed because of concerns that the dam would fail and flood out several nearby homes. The Lorraine County's engineer department oversaw the removal and drained the lake, eliminating the pronounced algal blooms present in the impoundment area. Brentwood, along with Finley Lake, was listed as impaired for, whatever the heck that is, etrification or undesirable algae, which we don't really understand why, because we didn't really see it, but anyway, and restoring the natural stream, which has not been free-flowing since the 1950s. However, there was no management of the property post-dam removal. The area has been subsequently overgrown by invasives, and the local residents have voiced their desire to have the lake restored, or at a minimum, move some mowing done on the property to control the tall weeds. As a result, the Brentwood Lake site should be targeted as an important restoration area. It is situated over hydric soils. Hydric soils are wetland, and comprises about 15 acres. The relevant stream is a direct tributary to the east branch of the Black River, and takes drainage and nutrient loads from an 18-hole golf course immediately upstream, also a prison farm. Doesn't say that, but the prison farm's up there. Development of a properly managed wetland complex in this area would serve a vital nutrient and stormwater mitigation function for the Jackson Ditch East Branch subwatershed, which is suffering increased pressures from suburban development. So it sounds like the county did know, at least part of the county knew, what was happening in Brentwood. And these hydric soils are actually created in part by underground springs, by the fact that Lorraine County was in actual wetlands, and also by the fact that water has sat and supersaturated the soil, and it creates anaerobic bacteria, which are bacteria that breathe without air. And that is still down in the soils. And so you can't put a walking trail on a wetland. So we're not really sure what we can do, but apparently there are those in the area that have some idea. And we'd like to get together with whomever on this list might help to figure out what could be done for Brentwood. Now, the other thing that we've seen is that the state of Ohio wanted to remove that dam. And I was looking at some documents at Carlisle yesterday, and one of the documents indicated that basically the state of Ohio is happy that the dam's out, because then there can be more development upstream, and they don't have to worry about it harming us. Well, I want you to know, when that development occurs upstream, the more water they dump into Brentwood, the more water's being dumped into Aliria, and the more you guys are going to be flooded when the Black River floods. And this document is pointing out, this would provide some kind of mitigation for that issue. So if we wanted the lake back, I don't know if the powers that be would, it would be easy to do. And second, it would be very costly. And third, it's handling not only the 33 homes around it and the neighborhood, it's handling everything from the five-square-mile input upstream, and it's handling the nutrient loads. And if you don't understand what that means, that's a huge shot of fertilizer. And that huge shot of fertilizer, if it doesn't have a place to hang out, it's going to go downstream and feed all the wetlands, and feed all those invasive species that everybody downstream in the Black River has been trying to get rid of forever. So there is a reason to restore the area in Brentwood into something positive.
Karen, we can't do anything until we get the property issue resolved. And as I indicated to you on several occasions, there may be more coming down the road. There's ODNR grants, there's the ability to do things. But there's no ability to do anything until the property issue is resolved. And one of the, one of the quick solutions we can do is deal with the stormwater, and then, then... solutions we can do is deal with the stormwater, and then, then there needs to be a, a group put together that works towards either restore, whatever they wanna do with it, uh, whether they wanna have it as a wetland habitation, whether they want, uh, to, to, uh, work on the invasive species out there, but none of those things can happen while the, the ownership of the property is still undecided. I know you've decided, and that's all well and fine, and I'm not gonna object to you making that decision, but there's a whole host of other people that have no clue, really, where that property lies. I looked it up on the auditor's website, and it's still in the Spitzer organization name, but they say that was because the homeowners association failed to shift title and do the, the split on the property.
Yeah, and in my talks with, uh, Mr. Giardini, he did state, if anybody wants a quick claim deed, Spitzer's will quickly, quick claim that to anyone.
Did he say if he had any documentation showing that the property they'd transfer over to the homeowners association?
He did, we didn't discuss that, Tom.
All right.
How can you do a quick claim deed on a property you don't own?
Well, I...
I have a question!
No.
How do you do that?
Well, I guess if it's in the auditor's name, uh...
Well, I, I wanna...
I don't necessarily, listen, wait a minute, wait, I understand her question, it's a little bit different, I think, than what you're answering. I don't know either, but all I know is what they tell me, they say the property was given over and never transferred properly. So, in their mind, they don't own it. I, I can't argue the technicalities.
Right.
I can tell you that, when the property issue is cleared up, we can get you some help on some of the immediate issues. The rest of them is gonna take a long-term planning solution, and it may bring in ODNR money. There may be, uh, an impoundment, there may be the need to slow some of the water coming out of what is a massive watershed coming right out of Grafton, right down this, this stream. None of that's gonna happen until this property issue is resolved.
I agree, and I spoke with Mr. Roth Gary's office, um, last week, because we have a settlement agreement, the quote homeowners association between us and...
Excuse me, Karen, is Mr. Roth Gary an attorney or Judge Roth Gary?
Judge, I'm sorry, Judge Roth Gary.
Okay, thank you, please.
Yes, sorry. Judge Roth Gary's office, um, and he happened to be on vacation, so I spoke with the staff attorney, and unfortunately, I don't have his name with me. But, um, we have a settlement agreement that came out of the quote lawsuit in two thousand and nine, December two thousand and nine. The settlement agreement states that Spitzer Hardware will never claim that Brentwood Lake Homeowners Association owns the property again. Um, he, the attorney told me that he would be speaking with Mr. Ennis, and that I would be hearing back from Mr. Ennis, um, on what, whatever I'm going to be hearing back from Mr. Ennis. So, did you speak with Judge Roth Gary's office and the attorney out of there?
I did speak with him briefly.
And do you have anything to share with us?
Other than we talked about, that the judgment entry is there, and there's a settlement agreement.
And the settlement agreement states...
You know, um, this is the problem, Mrs. Johnson, you know, you talk to a whole bunch of people, you get bits and pieces, uh, yeah, I'm not gonna sit here and discuss the legalities. What I've explained to you people before, and this is just like the Lorraine sewer thing that came up here, you know, people come up here with a problem that's been in existence for fifty years, they start throwing papers around, they come in and say, "This person said this, and this person said this, and this person says this," and you throw it on my table, and I'm supposed to make legal analysis and make the decisions. I've told you people, and this is what happened in the litigation, and this is what I've told everybody before. You wanna find this out, somebody's gonna have to go to court, litigate this, and have a legal determination as to what everybody's rights are out there. You know, I'm not gonna continue to try and answer that, Mrs. Johnson, because people take bits and pieces of what I say and misquote it, so I'm not gonna say anything anymore. I don't know what the situation is there, it's just like the Lorraine thing. We got fifty years of a mess, and the only way it's going to be cleared up is by going to court and have a judicial decision. I can't make that decision, Commissioner.
And we have a settlement agreement that I thought came out of court.
Well, then, you're gonna have to take it back to court to enforce it.
We did, and what I was told by Judge Roth Gary's office is that Mr. Ennis would be giving us elimination.
I, I don't think that's accurate, I have to agree with Jerry. If you have a settlement agreement, well, let me ask you, you say there's no homeowners association, so who has the settlement agreement? It's just like you asking me, how could they quick, uh, quick deed a piece of property? You say there's no homeowners association, but then you say "we," "we," who is "we"?
Mr. Giardini keeps saying the homeowners association owns it. The homeowners association is basically not functioning because Mr. Giardini's sued it.
See, you didn't answer my question now. Who is "we" and who has the settlement? Is it you?
I have a copy of the settlement.
Not a copy?
Who is it to?
Who is it with?
Who's the settlement to?
It's with the homeowners association.
So, there is an organization that you say doesn't exist?
No, the homeowners association at the time made a, we made a settlement agreement.
Then, you know what, there is no settlement agreement, 'cause there is no organization that exists.
Okay, then it's impossible for Brentwood Lake Homeowners Association to own the property, therefore, we've just solved the property ownership issue.
I, well, I tell you what, you have to solve that in court. You, you say you have an agreement, you have an agreement, and then I say, "Well, what about the homeowners association? Why don't they do this and this?" Then you go, "They don't exist, they don't function." Then you keep referring to, uh, an agreement that is with them, and you know what, the truth is, they don't have...
It's similar to us having an agreement with the South Shore Community Development Corporation if it doesn't exist.
Right.
There's no agreement.
Well...
I, I understand, and, and...
I mean, there was a homeowners, you guys kinda revitalized it under...
Yes.
...um, advice to do it in order to try to resolve the issue, so that's where the homeowners association's coming up. Well, you're saying you have an agreement that states that the homeowners association doesn't own the, the lake?
Correct.
Okay, and I understand what Mr. Ennis is saying, is he can't give a legal opinion on this, this is gonna have to go to litigation for it, and I would love to tell you, you know what, you know, the auditor states that, that's the rule, and Mr. Spitzer owns it, but they're gonna just come back with litigation and say they don't own it. So, you were going to need a judge to make a rule, you know, saying, "Hey, this property is owned by, you know, either the homeowners association, or by, um, Spitzer was a hardware..."
Yes, Spitzer Hardware.
Well, here's our...
I mean, we, we'll do whatever we can to help you, I, I think you know, I'm sincere on that, but we have to get the, um, homeowner, whoever owns the property, resolved. Now, if they're willing to go through and do a quick title deed to get that over to the homeowners association, and there's no litigation on it, would the homeowners association, or would the residents be willing to put a homeowners association together, together, and take the property? Uh, that would be the first question.
I would say no.
No.
Because we were sued the last time we put a homeowners association together, and nobody trusts anybody. Nobody even trusts the fact that we had a lawyer from Columbus.
Who sued you?
Spitzer! Spitzer!
Oh, Spitzer sued the homeowners association?
Yes!
Okay, all right, I'm asking, I don't know, you say things, I just wanna get the fill-ins, Karen.
Okay, okay. So, here's our problem. If we take this to an attorney, now, just hypothetically, basically, what we would take to an attorney is that our lake, our dam was breached, our lake was taken away. However, it was the county that did that, and the residents still do not understand why the county put themselves into a position.
Okay, we, I can answer that question. We did that because, in order to help the people out there. I see your township trustee shaking his head and, and confirming that. The county entered this to aid the folks out there, and, and I'm regretful of the day that Ken Carney came up with a solution, a low-cost solution, almost a no-cost solution, to do this, so that it didn't cost, because ODNR wanted that dam breached, and they wanted the residents to pay to breach that dam.
Actually, that's not true, they wanted Spitzer to pay. The lawsuit was against Spitzer, we were never in that lawsuit.
The homeowners association was in that lawsuit.
Against whom?
ODNR.
No, against Spitzer. Spitzer brought us into the lawsuit.
They brought the county in the lawsuit, they brought the township in the lawsuit, they brought the homeowners association in the lawsuit. The defendants was us four, and the plaintiff was ODNR.
Mr. Ennis, you were the attorney, and I'm sorry I have to ask you this, but this should be an easy question. Who was in the lawsuit, and who were you defending?
ODNR brought the lawsuit against Spitzer, and then Spitzer cross-claimed and made everybody else defendants.
Thank you.
Well, but that still brings you into the lawsuit, Karen.
That is Spitzer bringing a homeowners association that isn't a homeowners association.
It doesn't matter, you were still in the lawsuit, and we still tried to help out out there. How you got into it is not important, you were in it, and, and you're, and, and Barry is very correct here. It doesn't matter how you got into the room, you were in the room.
But what's not clear is that it's not a homeowners association, they didn't have a right to represent anybody. It was a social group, we can call them the Girl Scouts instead of the homeowners association.
Well, are the Girl Scouts willing to take title to the property out there, so we can do something?
No, that's our problem!
The, the problem, Karen was a member of the homeowners association, I think you were the secretary.
Not at the time, I hadn't been for years.
Ed Enity was the president.
Ed Enity was the president.
And Ed Enity was there in the courtroom with us to make those agreements.
And he specifically stated he cannot represent the residents, and that's why they had no money to put forth.
You had your...
And our attorney, not even our attorney, believe it or not, my, my thing isn't working. Okay, our attorney, we had an attorney that went in, and he did not sign up to be our attorney. I don't know how this works, but apparently...
This is way too complicated for this room?
But apparently, if you sign up to be an attorney on a case, and the people run out of money, who's paying you, you have to continue doing that case with no money. So, he was just there to sit in the room and make sure we didn't hurt ourselves. He didn't represent us.
Yeah, Karen, um, we, we're not gonna be able to try it.
I understand that, but this is, this is such a big issue, and I personally cannot resolve it. And like Mr. Ennis said, it went back fifty years, but the point is, we have a big situation, we have a health issues going on here, and we also have a situation where if, if we had all the money in the world, and we were gonna sue somebody, it would have to be the county that we would end up suing.
Well, the one gentleman, Doc, is what we refer to, he said he would take over that land if he could.
No, he said the portion in front of his house where he, he's at the head of the lake, and it's really flat there, and he put a garden in.
Yeah, I didn't know if he was willing to do that.
It's nothing like the rest of the lake area.
Right, no, I remember.
Right.
And it's flooding.
I'll take my part.
Do you remember what I, what I suggested out there, that the thirty or so homeowners around the lake formed their own association?
I know, and spent three thousand dollars a year.
Form their, or you don't, that's to put the lake in if you want the lake. You see, you, you remain fixated on one particular little issue, there was multiple things discussed. If you guys formed your own association, Lady of the Lake, whatever, I like your email, by the way, uh, and you took title to that property, those thirty homeowners can decide and work on that. Uh, it doesn't have to be all two hundred and fifty residents there. If, if they were, if you formed that association and asked for a title to that land, I think you would get it, and we can work on the stormwater issues, and then we can work on ODNR issues and park issues, and those people that are surrounding the lake would have better control of their future, uh, whether, whether it would be to work towards restoration of a lake, or a, a, um, a wetlands area, a recreation area, somebody has to take control of that property, because in the current condition, we can't do anything. Forget who it is, forget whether there's an HOA, forget, somebody's got to take control of that property, 'cause the current listed owner denies ownership, and we can't do anything on that property until that's resolved. I'm not trying to stop you from talking about these other things, I'm trying to get the immediate barrier to any other future, uh, progress taken off the table, and, and I'm a, I'm a little bit frustrated at how to do that for you. I know we can't take title to it, the township doesn't want title to it, so it's going to take a group of residents out there to form something to, to take title, or go to court with Spitzer and try to fight it out. The, and as far as suing the county, I mean, everybody sues us. Usually, they find out at the end of the day that we're able to take ourselves out of that litigation, and I think we can easily do that. But if it happens, it happens, it's a cost of doing business, the, the, so, rather than worrying about those things, let's, let's, somebody's got to form a, a, a group, or get somebody that's willing to take this, take this land.
Karen, we're not arguing with you, we just, if you can get that one issue resolved, however you do it amongst the residents, then we can work concurrently to bring everything else to the table, until, again, as Mr. Cordez stated, the ownership of the property is the issue.
I understand that.
If Spitzer Hardware owns, owns it, and they don't wanna do anything with it, if it's their property, I guess they can say they wanna not do anything, correct? As long as it's not harming anything?
Well, yeah, the truth is, they could take him over here, and they could file a lawsuit against us for dumping that stormwater out there on their property.
Right, so I mean, until that is rectified, nobody's arguing with you, we understand the issues you're having, but again, and going back to Lorraine sewer issue with the townships, again, we don't have any standing anywhere until somebody takes a position, whether it's the residents, or a group, or one person, on how they wanna do the lake. Then we can work concurrently, work through the ODNR, the Black River Rap Plan, but again, there'll be a cost to that, of some degree.
We understand, and...
And like you said, you quoted three thousand dollars or something to get a lake back, was that a number thrown out last week?
It was about three thousand per homeowner on the lake for about twenty years to redo the complete lake.
Okay, I mean, so, those are all the issues, but you really have to figure out about the piece of land.
And that is beyond me. If a whole government has not figured this out...
The, but the other thing you gotta understand is, that you just can't, even if you took ownership of the property, you know, and, and putting the lake back to its state is what was, uh, decided, you still gotta get permits to do that now. You still gotta, there's no guarantee that, you don't have to raise your hand, sir.
I just wanted to ask a question, Rich House on Thursday, I'd like to...
You have to come up here, Mr. Johnson, you have to come up to the microphone so they can check you.
Would we be able to, to get the stormwater drainage done before any of these other complicated...
I think so. I, I, I think one, once we, we know where the ownership of the land lies, uh, I would wanna get in there. In fact, this is a good time of the year when the ground starts hardening up in, in November to get out there and do that. I walked out there.
Because that wouldn't affect any of the other decisions, that could be done, and it...
Sure.
Sure. I mean, with the property being, I guess, titled through the auditor to Spitzer's Hardware, uh, do you think they would give permission, or just say, "We don't own it, so we don't care if you go on there"? Would that be adequate?
They, they could say, "We don't own it, I don't care," but then that, "We just can't go on that property." We, we, we actually need affirmative permission, and, and...
Well, I guess, if...
The, the...
We give you permission.
Right. Okay, but, but, you know, I, I will say this, if you, if you, if, if you say, "We give you permission," now you're giving defense to Spitzer to say that they, they don't own the property, I just wanna caution you there. Uh, so, you know, this, this is, we, we don't, we don't have a dog in this fight, we just wanna do some work for you. The, the, but I wanted to point out to Karen that ODNR may not grant another permit to, to dam that watershed. So, you know, if, if, if they're still thinking about, you know, some, some of those things, you gotta, you got years to go, uh, even if they wanted to put the dam back. ODNR isn't favorable to damming these watersheds anymore, they...
Well, and that's where, we're talking with Metro Parks, they said if you went with that impound, which was basically a...
And I, I'll talk, yeah, I'll talk to you and whatnot, yeah, more on that.
Yeah, the six-foot dam, under six foot, then you won't need ODNR approval for that.
Right.
Just because retention area approved by them.
Right, and, and one other thing, this, this kind of, this letter that came from a resident on the back of her survey, is kind of the epitome of what we're finding in Brentwood. Brentwood is more than half-retired, a lot of these people are lower income, um, and we're moving more and more lower income in when houses are being sold for forty to sixty thousand dollars. And this letter states, "I'm eighty-one-year-old widow, and have made several improvements to my property at my own expense. Just this summer, I've spent nearly ten thousand dollars just to get better drainage around the house. The drainage and sewer was not properly done when the homes were, were originally built fifty years ago. Of course, I'd love to see the lake back, the bridge and etc. repaired, and back to the beautiful site it was when I bought it seventeen years ago. It's getting harder every year just to be able to live here. For senior citizens, money doesn't grow on trees. Help, please." And I will tell you, I have personally spent thousands of dollars on my own sewers this year as well as many other people in Brentwood. We can't handle this money. We're not in the bloodstream of money.
Just for clarification, did you give this petition for the Noxious Sweeds to the township? Because they're the ones that have to do the petition.
They have not, no.
This is not a county, the county can't do this.
I know. I just want everybody.
So if you would give one to Barry.
And they would need the original.
Do you have the original?
They would need the original.
Oh, okay. I'll get you, I can get you the original.
Yeah, he needs that.
Just so you know, the reason why we're giving this petition is because if somebody dies, if somebody gets hurt, we want to make sure that everybody that should have been told has been told.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you for, everybody for working so hard to try to get this issue resolved and for going out there and tramping through the, I'm sure through the mud.
I'm not exactly sure where we're at.
Well, it needs to be determined through a court system who owns the property before we can go further. If there's something we can do with the drainage now, if we can get permission to do something with that, we should go forward with that for what we can do, what we're legally able to do.
Until the dispute is resolved clearly, we're not going to be able to do anything.
Not even the outfalls or anything?
We have to get on the land and somebody has to give us permission.
Permission isn't, I don't care who owns it, go ahead and do it. The, or permission isn't, well, we don't claim we own it, so you can do what you want. That's not permission. It has to be a clear understanding and a clear meeting of the minds between the proper owner and the people doing the work.
Like, isn't it considered like a utility, like if?
No.
No?
And we don't have any type of easement for that creek or anything because of the package.
Correct. I mean, the way the drainage was set up, it was set up to have a lake there. You know, I'm not in dispute with most of what Ms. Johnson has said. It was set up, that stormwater. In fact, we've invested quite a bit of money in stormwaters on the other side of that development. The drains, you notice all the drains and the culverts have been replaced. We've invested a lot into the package plant and to deal with infiltration into the sewer plant out there. So, you know, this is an issue that I believe needs to be resolved and we're not saying we won't resolve that issue. But you just cannot unilaterally enter a piece of property without affirmative agreement to do so. And we need to widen that channel. And that's going to take an affirmative understanding of who owns that property, the channel runs through. You just can't go on somebody's property and start.
Private property rights are still safe in the state of Ohio.
Well, we have that going on in Brighton Township right now. You know, I've been working with a Brighton Township trustee and we talk, we've become pretty good friends over the last few months because we talk almost weekly. We have one property owner holding up an important job that has safety and health consequences because of septic out there. They may have to go to the petition process while we have the resources to be able to fix the drainage problem out there. One property owner is holding up the whole issue out there.
I have one other thing. Can I say?
So you're saying right now we're not going to be able to do anything until that issue is completely resolved through the court system?
Well, it doesn't have to go to court.
Somebody has to give us permission.
No one has to take ownership of the property.
Somebody has to affirm ownership of that property.
I would be willing to take this to a state attorney general's office, at least put together a petition telling them what's going on, telling them that they approved this dam and see what they have to say. But one other thing is I was thinking that there could be a creative way of doing something where our monies could be pooled together without an actual homeowners association. And I don't know the legalities of this, but if some type of trust were put together. Because see, part of the problem is, we've gone to attorneys and they said that it's near impossible to back-end in a homeowners association. The reason is, especially when you have a big property to take care of, say you even get a little bit more than half of the people to sign on. And that would be a miracle anyway in Brentwood. You then have to take that half of the homeowner, that half that joined the homeowners association and sue the rest of the residents. And then you have a civil war and they told us not to do it. Now, there's one other way of doing it, and like I said, this is a creative way, and that is to put together a trust. And that trust would have to be probably held by a government entity, something like the township. Monies from maybe, I don't know what law would apply, a ditch petition process would be taken from residents, put into that trust and trustees elected from Brentwood to use the monies for whatever maintenance. And it would be overseen by a government entity so that the monies were properly being used. And that's the only method I've came up with. Because I believe as long as the monies were reasonable, residents would put it in. But nobody is in a position to take the property. I don't see an easy way of doing this. Lawyers are telling us it can't be done.
Yeah, but it can't be done. The property owners around the lake or a majority of the property owners around the lake, enough of them that can make a contiguous parcel can form another organization. It's done all the time.
And we would have to sue the ones that didn't. And there are those that don't want to.
They would have access to the land.
You would take the title of the property you agreed upon and that would exclude the residents who didn't participate, Karen.
But they're lakefront people.
Well, there's no lake. The property would belong to those 15 people that formed the organization.
Right. What you're doing is, you're paying, the people who become part of the organization would pay for it. The people that live in the area would benefit.
Exactly. And we can't do that.
Well, no, you can do it. You may not think it's fair and I may agree with you on that, but that is the solution in order to get the lake back, in order to try to put the revenue in there to do it. The big issue is finding out who owns the property, getting a legal decision on that. And then we can go through multiple different options, but we have to get that done first. And if you go through litigation and Spitzer does own it, Spitzer Hardware, and they don't want to do anything with the property, what do you want to do?
Right. I mean, that's the scenario currently. That the assumption is that they own it now and they don't want to do anything with it.
Right.
And that's why you're upset.
Right. Well, I'm upset because this wasn't set up right to begin with. I'm upset because we have really no logical choice, nothing we can logically do to fix this. I'm upset because no matter what, some of us are going to be paying and some of us aren't. I'm one of the people that has paid for years and years and years and it's usually the people that don't pay that are the ones that are using it. My husband and I take out the trash in the park every week. Is it my job? I'm not the trash man.
It's kind of like my road assessment on Oak Point Road when they wanted to charge me like $13,000 for 100-foot of frontage. And I'm like, why should I pay, you know, and everybody else in the world uses Oak Point Road, but I'm the one that had to pay for it. It's kind of the same situation. But we were forced to, this is an opportunity or an option for you whether or not you want to do that.
Right. And there's 210 or 214, we don't even know how many homes are there. Not only that, I don't know if you know, Brentwood also goes down Route 82. There's another road down there that's part of Brentwood. We haven't talked to them. They've seceded from the nation years ago.
They got thrown off the island.
Well, that's because Spitzer put another house down there. So anyway, I don't know what the next step is.
I promise you, when the land issue is resolved, if it is resolved, we will be out there to help you with the resources we currently have available to us. I promise you that, when we want to do that. The issue on the land is beyond our ability to make that determination. We're prepared to assist you and prepared to do the things that will alleviate some of the stresses out there until a more permanent solution can be found. And that promise is by this board of commissioners, me acting as their person that would get that work done for you. The, as far as the land, let me go back again and I understand all your concerns. But it has, somebody has to take clear ownership of that land. And if you litigate that, I would bet you that that would take three to five years. There'll be delays, motions, extensions.
Pre-trial.
You know, it won't be, we will not be doing anything on that property for years.
I have a quick question. Rich Johnson again.
Did he say tape change?
No, he said microphone.
Oh, microphone. Okay.
Go ahead.
If Spitzer did give him permission to have the drainage done, would there be any cost to Spitzer's organization for doing that or is that all county?
No, I don't think there'd be any cost right now because we're unloading that stormwater at the beginning of that lake. And if the land was a little bit more natural, it would flow better to that creek.
That may color his decision as well, so.
I'm not, Rich, you know, I'm not so sure because the more they get involved, if they grant permission.
Then they're owners. They take ownership.
Then they defeat their argument that they're not the owner that failed the transfer, but that they gave it up years ago. They're pretty witty. That's why I was cautioning you not to give permission to something that would cause you some problems. I mean, I like you folks. I didn't want to see you do anything that they may use against you later on.
Forming a homeowners association, they would use that against us later on. They've already used it.
It would be a new organization. This is the, forget the old. I'm talking about something that's new.
We were forming a new organization and they own a house there and they said they'd sign on and they didn't sign on and that's when the lawsuit happened while we were forming the new organization that we spent $12,000 on.
Well, what it was coming down to, you did form the organization and it was probably done to manipulate the situation. But it was because of the dam being breached.
Yes, to own it.
You wanted them to repair the dam, correct?
No, we were forming a homeowners association so that we could proceed with what Mr. Ennis was coming up with, with this $100 a year thing to fix it. And we were, we had hired an attorney, we were getting people to sign, we had people signing their deeds onto this. And we ended up getting screwed. And that ain't going to happen again. And right now, I am going to go to the state attorney general's office and I'm going to have a petition. And what I'd like is for you all to step up and also back that effort that say this needs to be resolved and you guys are the one who pushed the issue. We were the ones that were working, you were working with us to resolve it. When the state of Ohio came in, they approved what was done here. They told us it was going to be to protect our health and now they've put us in a health situation. They wanted the dam out for their own purposes. It's now handling water for upstream development. They want more upstream development. And also I would think you would want to protect aliria from the increased water.
Karen, do you know who represents ODNR?
The state attorney general's office?
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about. And the problem is?
I'm just letting you know that ODNR is represented by the attorney general's office.
That's why I want to go to the attorney general's office. Because I think there was a foul there.
Yeah, what he's trying to imply, if I'm not correct, is if ODNR agreed to it, the attorney general is probably going to agree with ODNR.
They have to defend it.
Yeah, they have to.
They'll have to defend ODNR.
To us, we have Jerry Ennis. Whether you go to him directly or not, he still represents county government and townships.
ODNR, if you bring issue with this, the AG is lawfully the legal counsel for ODNR.
Well, apparently they have many different divisions, just like everybody else. And the state attorney general's office has its own division for ODNR. So I would go to a different part.
Maybe there's a resolution settlement area or something throughout that, something to deal with concerns of residents. That I don't know, but I would.
But I just want to take this higher.
Find out who you're going to attack to beforehand.
I will.
I wish you all luck.
But we need to do something, you know, and if you tell me, I mean, I'm going to talk to Commissioner Williams as far as with the Blackwater, the watershed issue and see if anything can be done that way.
Yeah, I mean, I could talk, a friend of mine was actually on that report. He worked on it. But that was done many years ago.
Let me help you with the report. The resources were developed to produce this report for countywide. Now, Don's worked on our community development directors here, but they're not a governmental entity. They're a group of volunteers that worked on this, the study. We provided resources to a grant to develop this. There's no resources there. This is a nice document to look at issues in the future. Plus, what I will say about this document, now this is where it helps you. This is something I spoke to about an hour ago. Once the ownership is cleared, and I don't want to go around that track again, this document will help the property owners secure ODNR funding or federal funding, grant money, saying, this study's been done, these are some of the issues with the property, this is what we propose to do. And I don't know what the we propose to do will be in the future. Without this kind of stuff, you don't really stand a good chance of getting federal dollars and state dollars to rework the property. That's what this was developed for, to allow entities along the watershed and in various conditions of disrepair or problematic situations to be able to go to these authorities that had grant money to give and use this study as a method of saying, we want to do this and this is what supports doing this on this particular piece of land. That's all it really is. There's nothing else to it.
I agree with that. And we were told that only government entities could receive that grant money, that if we were to own it privately, we couldn't.
What we would do as a government entity, and we do this many times, you would come in and it'd be, you know, the X, Y, Z of restoration of the Brentwood lake bed. And you would say, look, there's an ODNR grant out there for spraying and removing Noxious Sweeds. Now, we got a huge grant. We got a million-dollar-plus grants to eradicate Noxious.
Noxious.
Been talking too much. Along the Black River ending. We're actually going to have people out there next year pulling out invasive species along the riverbed because we received a million-dollar grant to do that. An organization approached us to apply for that grant. They would approach us and they would work as collaborative with us. We could either administer the grant or we can pass the grant through. You do need somebody working with you, but as a conduit and nothing more. And as a fiscal agent, because anytime fiscal dollars are usually used in grant money, you need some kind of fiscal agent that is usually a governmental entity or certified entity to do so. Those are really easy things to do. This was the basis. We undertook this work and it was a long period of time to get this done so that those organizations with a lot of these concerns could be supported by a proper study so we could access these funds. And we have done this many times with other organizations and we would do it here.
I don't see how this is going to help us take on a piece of property that we see as nothing but a liability with a future promise of maybe. And also, one other thing, I talked to Mark Stewart. They're going to come out and reassess the whole neighborhood again. They feel that those values, that the new values are too high. And that information will be out in November. So this is hurting our values and it's a big drop in county tax money. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen.
Laura and Mr. Cordez's report. Do you have anything?
I yield.
Mr. Ennis.
I just have one matter pending litigation to discuss in executive session.
I have no report.
You have no report, Commissioner?
No report today.
Well, congratulations on your endorsement from the Chronicle Telegraph.
Thank you. You too.
Very wise people over there.
Yeah, they are smart.
Look, brown-nosing over there, huh?
Without a doubt. The board of commissioners and Jim Cordez met with Andy Young and Brad Dick from the Chronicle to talk about our 911 levy and our TV levy. They have endorsed both, I believe. I saw the 911, but I might have missed.
They endorse both and so did the Journal.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Chip Colish for Hispanic Issues in Progress for holding their candidate's night last week. Very nice. I'd like to thank the YWCA, Young Women's Christian Association here in Allee for having their candidates forum last week. Commissioner Williams and I both attended the La Catta Annual Dinner. What else do we have?
Biden.
Oh, yeah, okay. We actually had, I had a meeting yesterday. I chaired the United Way Utilities Committee. We got our rationale of funds and it has dropped about 15% from last year. So we appropriated organizations. That will come up the next board meeting. We had the Investment Advisory Committee meeting yesterday, going over what our revenues are in investment. It's going to hold at 1.1 million, the treasurer told us. Congratulations to Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce, their 25th anniversary. And we did have Vice President Biden in, as I shared with Commissioner Kokoski. I got an opportunity to speak with him. And his first elected position was a county commissioner, actually county council in Delaware. He says, "A rough job." He said, "The toughest job in government. You're in charge of everything. Nobody really knows what you do." So it was nice to speak to the Vice President.
I tried to get tickets for that. I was actually.
Yeah, you couldn't quite make it, huh?
Well, no one offered tickets to me.
But he just stood lying like everybody else.
No, he did ask me if I would get him a ticket. I said, "Not on your life."
You know, politically, you know, not on the same side as Mr. Biden, but coming into Lorraine County, I think that is an honor and definitely respect.
He's a great speaker too. Great speaker. I mean, he's a dynamic speaker.
Well, we all went to President Obama together.
Right.
Yeah, he makes a lot of funny gestures too, as we've seen on TV. It's all on TV.
End of my report. Go ahead, Tom.
Actually, a short one here. The Wellington Kiwanis actually had me come out and speak. A great event out there. Little turnout. I don't know if it was me or if it was the rain that was going on that day, but the individuals that wore there do appreciate the time and the, just talking about county issues and what's important for the southern part of the county. So do appreciate that. We have a conference call later today with the Commissioners Association and, oh, just a reminder, this weekend you're going to have trick-or-treating out there. You're going to have a lot of young kids going through up and down the streets. Please be careful when you're driving your vehicles and look out for them. So I know I'll be out this weekend trick-or-treating with my kids. So I may actually go as Joe Biden. I don't know.
[laughing]
End of my report.
For correspondence.
I move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Phelan?
Aye.
Public comment?
Mr. Looby.
Uh-oh, we're being sued.
I need money. Show me the money.
Commissioners, good morning. Tim Looby from the General Division Court. I like to believe that I come over here not always with bad news, and actually, in this case, I wanna caution you, I think this is a good idea that may bear fruit for all parties, but I wanted you to at least be aware of it. Recently, an idea came to mind to move our PSI department, which is currently housed in the Columbia Gas Building, over to the second floor of the old county courthouse. Again, wanna caution you, still not sure if this is gonna work or not, but the idea has merit, and the next step in that process is to actually look at that facility and see what, if anything, we need to do to it. And so I had some brief conversations or some dialogue with Mr. Cordez, and it was our belief that Karen Davis could play a role in making that assessment and telling us, yeah, this is what you wanna do, no, that won't work, or this is gonna cost that much money, but I didn't get a sense from him that he felt able to move forward without your approval.
Well, I haven't discussed it with them, because you simply, let me give clarification here, you simply said, can Karen Davis help with moving PSI to the courthouse? That was the first correspondence I got.
I think it was an assessment, we just wanted to look at the idea.
I don't even know the word "assessment" was in there, but it may have been. It's been a couple days, almost a week or two. So when I caught up with that issue, what I said was, I hadn't talked to the board about anybody moving to the second floor of the courthouse, so, you know, I need to speak with them about it, how have you decided that you're moving in the space that hasn't been allocated to the courts? And you said, that's when you came back and said, "No, we're just looking at the potentiality of being able to do that," and I have not answered that, that came in yesterday. And I have had no time to speak with the Board of Commissioners on this. And I will do so with them individually later, today or tomorrow.
So you're basically looking just for Ms. Davis, use her expertise, kinda lay it out, will it work?
Absolutely. I mean, if the answer is no, that's fine, too.
Is the state willing to give us any money towards build-out?
I have no idea if there's gonna even be any build-outs, Commissioner.
Basically, I mean, for us to discuss it, are you looking just moving them over, is that what the board would...
That's the concept.
Do we have any capital costs that you would be aware of, or is the facility ready to go?
That I don't know.
I think that's what you want.
Yeah, I want somebody that, I'm not a construction expert.
And I also wanna tell you, I'm a little disturbed that you called the Elyria Building Department on us to go to the courthouse, which this board doesn't know about, and I'm not sure by what authority you did that, either.
By the authority that my judges asked me to contact the...
Your judges are not the building owner.
Well, with respect, Jim, the city, that is a city, it's located in the city, are you disputing that the city has...
Well, you called them, right? You called them.
I don't dispute that, I don't think that we have to answer to you as to what we do in that respect.
Wait, explain what happened.
I did. He called, you didn't, because I haven't had a chance to talk to him. He called the building department on us to come in and inspect the courthouse, which is outside.
Which courthouse?
Our courthouse. We only have one courthouse.
Well, we have the old courthouse.
That's the courthouse, the other one we refer to as the Justice Center, okay? And, you know, if there was an issue, it should've went through us, and it didn't. They just unilaterally called the Elyria Building Department to come in and inspect the building that they don't have control of.
Last time I checked, Jim, again, the city, that's within their jurisdiction.
But you called them.
I don't, we don't have to call you to do that, Jim.
You know what, you called them, you do have to call.
I disagree.
You know, it's not your building, and I've had these arguments with you before, and these discussions with you before, about you overstepping what your authority is.
I disagree, Jim.
Well, I know you disagree, because obviously, we were having this discussion, so I think it's pretty clear.
Well, our legal counsel is here, Jim, so please go ahead and ask him.
I don't need to ask legal counsel.
Well, then, that's your opinion, Jim.
You don't have authority over that building.
Jim, the issue being, Tim, excuse me.
Yes.
Issue being, if you thought there was an issue over there, you could've approached us, and we'd go and take a look at the issue, prior to bringing the Elyria Building Department in, so we can address the issue in-house.
With respect, Commissioner, I work for the judges. I act at the judge's direction. If the judges direct me to contact the city without contacting you, with respect, I'm gonna act at their authority. We can agree to disagree about whether or not we need, the court needs to contact the commissioners for authority over that.
Who owns the building? No, wait, one second question, because I've been down this road with Mr. Looby before, and with the judges. Who owns the building?
The county.
And who is, by definition, the county?
That would be the county commissioners.
Thank you.
That's not disposed of the issue, Jim. Let me follow you up with your...
Well, that's the issue.
No, it's not.
Well, that is the issue.
On your exact, who owns the building?
You can manipulate it any way you want, but the county commissioners own that building.
The county. Now, let's go to the third question, Jim.
There is no third question, I only asked two of them.
The third question is, by your reasoning, then the county has unilateral decisions over that building, and that's not true.
The county owns that building.
You are subject, the county is subject to the City of Elyria Building Code. Simple as that, Jim.
And we deal with the city of Elyria.
And anybody, any citizen, any person can contact the city.
I'm gonna tell you what, maybe I should call the building department, the city where you live, and have them go inspect your house. Okay?
You can, absolutely.
What were the issues that the judges felt were so important that they couldn't contact the Board of Commissioners, and that they wanted to go to the building department?
They're actually legion, Commissioner, I'd be happy to sit down, I have pages of stuff that we've sent over to the building department that has not been addressed.
We don't have a building department, you mean a maintenance department, and things like tack holes in the wall that you want filled, because in a lunchroom, you know, those are things, we just don't have the resources for that. But you know what, we've cut our staff, you haven't.
Okay, Commissioner, okay. I'm glad this is really a professional, appropriate conversation.
We've rented our hours, you haven't, and some of the stuff that you send over is so trivial, okay, that defies logic. Clean the lunchroom floor, and complaining about it, when we can't even keep the building restrooms for the public clean.
Well, if you equate...
I'm at the end of my rope with this there, Tim.
If you equate rodent infestation with cleaning the...
There is no rodent infestation. The last time those accusations were made, we sent people over to take a look at that.
You're talking about the Justice Center or the...
The courthouse.
The courthouse.
If there's an issue, and you raise it to the proper level, it'll be addressed. If it isn't something that is trivial, if you send me an email saying there's a rodent infestation, it'll be looked at immediately. But there better be justification for making those statements, and then we will take a look at it. But what you do is you infiltrate my chain of command in the middle of it, so I don't get aware of these things until afterwards, okay? And you actually went to Ms. Davis to ask for her help before you asked me, and where had she responded to you, that you needed to ask me before she could do that.
That's not true, Jim.
Okay, you know what, nothing I say is true.
I'm just telling you that...
Anytime I deal with you, nothing is true.
Again, you're not conducting yourself professionally here.
I'm conducting myself professionally, maybe if you conducted yourself professionally with dealing with my staff and the things we need to do, and stop making statements and doing these things, and working with me on the level we're supposed to be on, we won't have these problems.
Jim, let's just speak to the specific issue that you just said. I did not make an end around you. I sent you two emails over the last two weeks, and specifically asked whether or not we could involve Karen Davis in this project. Those emails weren't responded to. I am now here today asking for the board...
His assistant was off, and that could've been part of the reason why he didn't get back with you.
Okay.
We've had a lot of issues going on.
Again, I, my intent would never be to circumvent Mr. Cordez's authority. I appreciate that he has a job to do, and I would not contact one of his employees for an issue that would require his assistance. Now, I just, quite candidly, am not understanding why this conversation is degenerated.
Well, what I would like to know is what, you know, I would like to see the list of the issues that you do have with it.
Be glad to provide that, Commissioner.
And, you know, in the future, if you, if for some reason you can't get ahold of Mr. Cordez, I mean, I believe you have all three boards.
And I wanna be clear, Commissioners, I act at the judge's direction. I may, I understand your perspective, that this is a piece of property that you own, okay? I get that.
And I don't understand, I mean, if, what was the outcomes you were looking to achieve by the building department going over there, citing us, or what, why did the judges want the building department to go over there in the first place?
I'm gonna paraphrase, but we had been bringing to the building, to the maintenance department's attention for multiple years, issues and concerns.
At the courthouse?
At the old courthouse, yes, Commissioner.
And what are you in the courthouse doing? What is your function in the courthouse?
That's where the probation department is.
Okay.
They have a large department there, we have the crime labs there.
I mean, we...
I knew that we had the crime lab in the...
But we have talked about, you know, again, I'm gonna go back to when I brought up about doing the maintenance of the building, and that we have to go through, we have to get the funds on there.
Commissioner Williams, you were with me probably eight months ago, when we walked through that facility.
We had issues in a lot of our buildings that were...
And again, I'll defer to you, you were there, we witnessed stuff that the reporters considered appalling, okay? And so these were matters that were brought to the county's attention months and years before that.
And I did, I brought to the Board of Commissioners to go through and get funding in order to do the maintenance of the facility, because that is something that we have been putting off for way too long.
Right. So to suggest that we have not brought these to the county's attention is quite untrue.
But they have been addressed. And if they weren't addressed adequately, if the solution that was done wasn't suitable to you, a second sending over saying about these things we thought were gonna be corrected or weren't correct to our satisfaction, all the important things on that list, I have been confirmed, had confirmed, were done.
Okay, I'll give you another one, that I guarantee is not done. We have a door over there that's so rotted, that it's got a couple of inches of rust that the water flows through. We brought that over multiple months.
That was on a list that you gave to me?
No, this was stuff that I sent it down to Chauver. We put in help desk requests, which is what the county said.
Here's where I'm going again, and I'm gonna go back to it. You know, normally, I do not have any problem with you talking to our staff, people that provide services to you, okay? But at the time when it doesn't function right, and if that door does need to be replaced, and I don't know anything about the door, because I did get a list from you, and that door wasn't on the list.
That was for the Justice Center.
Okay, true enough.
So these, and we're not talking about Justice Centers.
True enough, okay? But before somebody calls the building department in Elyria, I would like to know that there's something wrong with the door, and it hasn't been taken care of by maintenance, because it may be something we can avoid having to take to an escalated level. I was not informed of those things.
Jim, here's what...
I'll be fair to you, Tim, I don't want you, we're not taking it out on you, because you're basically, you're an employee, you're taking your marching orders from the judges. The judges are the one, from my opinion, made a poor decision by going there. I wish they would've came back to us, at least talked more.
And I understand that, I think they feel that they have, let's talk about specifics, and then we'll get to exactly that issue, Commissioner. We put in, as we've been directed by the county, a help desk request for any maintenance issues. And I'm just talking specifically about the old courthouse. So we put in a help desk request. Those perhaps sometimes get addressed, quite often, they go into the ether, and nothing happens. We then send follow-ups with that, so again, we're doing our job, we're documenting, we're setting that up. Whether or not those, Jim, get escalated to you, I don't know.
Okay, here's the thing, there is a multitude of people asking to do things. So we evaluate it based upon the current resources for the things we can do that need to be done, and the things we can't do. Everything is not gonna be accomplished. If there's things that you feel need to be accomplished that are of an urgency, you and I can have a dialogue on that. And what I'm stating here, and you have confirmed, before the building department was called into courthouse, we did not have that dialogue.
Well, I guess we're seemed to, okay, this system doesn't seem to work, because when do I, I mean, I send over, let's say we send over 20 or 30 of those a week, do I need to call your office on a regular basis?
No, I said the ones that are of significant importance, because there's gonna be ones that are not gonna be done, and I referenced a few of them.
Well, then, all I would ask is that you respond to them. I mean, and you and I had this conversation about three months ago about the same concept, which is...
And I got the list from you.
About that issue, and I, and we sat here, and you told Mr. Chauver, and this is all we're asking. If you're not going to address it, tell us, I can handle that, if it's gonna take some time.
And I thought I corrected that with the Justice Center, I did not know the situation existed with the courthouse until I was told that the building inspector was going through our building.
Well, I think what we need to do, Jim, because one thing, as a Commissioner, I don't want you worrying about maintenance items when we have a director of maintenance.
And I don't wanna worry about maintenance.
We need to take care of our personnel issues and why it's not being done, because if a report, if you are putting a request in, and it's being ignored, and there is no response, and maybe it is true that, hey, there's a rotting door, should be able to give back and say, you know what, this is a low priority, it's going to take six to nine months to be done, and I think you would be happy with that.
It may not, depending on the type, the rotting door, I think, probably needs to be fixed, but there could be some things that are never gonna be done.
Right, but it's something, when you put a request in, even though I'm upset with the way the judges handle it, they do have a valid point, they should at least get some notification. And that's not a reflection on you, that's a reflection on us.
No, I'm not taking this reflection on me. I'll just point out that I never seem to have these problems with the domestic relations with the administrator over there. We talk about all kinds of stuff, and we collaborate on all kinds of work at the detention homes and the pods, and in their portion of the courthouse over there. I don't know why, but you and I have seen the...
So this is a failing on my part?
I'm not saying your point, you wanna interpret it the way you want.
I'm the change in that dynamic, Jim, you just said you and Doug do a great job, so...
I'm just saying that I don't have these problems with him. You can interpret that statement any way you want, you know, don't put words in my mouth, I didn't say anything, I said I don't have those problems over there.
I'll give Doug credit, he works with half as many judges.
Well, he's got different bosses, so, and it's...
But I think the process being, though, is we try to keep up with things, Tim, if it's anything that gets to that high of a level, again, we have a finite amount of people, we have half the people we ever had. You know, we've cut our capital improvements down, so we can fund all of the departments for the services required to provide. And again, some things aren't gonna get to at all, if it's something that is extremely important, then bring it to a higher level. But I mean, if it comes to patching tack holes in a wall, I probably don't think...
I'm not asking that that take a higher priority, or that necessarily, what all I'm asking, and again, there's plenty of documentation that this is the case, and if you wanna come up with a new process, that we would welcome discussion on that. We have been told, we've put a report in through the help desk. Those often, whether it's attacking on a wall, or repairing, or a rodent infestation, or water problem, or repairing a door, we don't get a response for that. And in fact, the last response I got was, from the maintenance department, was, "You guys are bothering us with these requests, you need to prioritize these."
Who told you that?
Then it's Chauver.
I think this kinda goes back to, Jim, what we talked about, we really need to have a facility director, someone who's gonna look over the facilities that they can go to.
Commissioner, all, all, I may go back to my basic statement here. Doug is the Court Administrator.
Mm-hmm.
I'm the County Administrator. Before we called the Building Department, we could've had a dialogue in it.
Well, okay, we need, that's true, and, but like, wait a minute, wait a minute. That's an issue, he was following orders, so, we can't really say, I mean, you guys have enough dialogue that you should've probably been able to talk about that before it went that far, but it wasn't, it wasn't his direction, it was the judge's direction.
It's called a courtesy phone call.
Right, and, and I, I agree with that, but let's get past that for right now.
Absolutely.
And we do, maybe we do need to have a better, um, format or a process where if it's not going to get done, let them know, hey, this is something, yeah.
Yeah.
In writing, something, a checklist, this is done, this is not going to get done, this will be done in this amount of time.
Commissioner, I appreciate what you're saying, and some of that, um, bigger items should be done, but we're not going to give them a lot of saying, we're not going to fill the tack holes.
I'm not saying a letter, I'm saying a checklist with another column, like a spreadsheet.
Gotcha.
In, in this one, done, going to be done, not going to be done, will be done by this date, you know, something, just to know what's not getting done.
I'm going to pull up all the work requests for the Justice Center and let you see them. And in this time of limited resources, when people are walking around, generating, generating these trivial work requests, knowing that we don't have the staffing to, to deal with that, and we're trying to deal with the big issues, just overburdens the system.
But you're, are you advocating we just ignore them? I'm not saying that whether it's cleaning a floor or patching a hole needs to be top number one on your list, but you're suggesting that we don't even make them, Jim.
Well, it, but I'm suggesting that if you make them, you have to be of the understanding that the potential for them to be on the list forever is going to be there. This going back and forth of correspondence and list, we don't have staff to, to mop the floor in the lunchroom, I'm not to Justice Center now. But we are, because that was a work request, it was on the list you gave me. We don't have staff to fill tack holes in your staff's wall.
Wouldn't it be appropriate for you guys to say, we're not, again, I'm, I'm not criticizing that. If you want to tell me you're never going to mop the floor, you're never going to patch the wall. Tell me that.
Then he'll send it back to his bosses.
That's right.
That's who he's reporting to.
My job, my judges say-
Yep.
This is a problem. They say fix this problem.
I think a better parameter is I, I'm, I'm going to put a limitation on what type of work requests can be submitted. That's a lot easier than me having, or, or having our staff sit, sit around and respond to, uh, to the minor request.
Minor matters.
Yeah, minor matters. Well, I, I think we just need to have, you know, mopping the floors is not, to me, that's housekeeping, that's not maintenance.
Why can't, that's not our issue.
So, if you want to have a summary of what maintenance is versus, we could do that. But, um, I understand your frustration in that, Tim, uh, we'll go through, we'll take care of some of the personnel issues that we have here and try to come up with a system that'll work. But, um, I don't think Mr. Cortez was purposely trying to, um, not answer your questions or respond back. He's busy, we have him doing a ton of things.
I understand.
And, uh, you can appreciate that. The judges have you working on multiple items as well. Uh, but if you could let the judges know next time, if they could at least give us a call, we could direct it as far as the Board of Commissioners.
I, I do understand your perspective, and I, and again, the judges felt that we made numerous overtures over the years-
Yeah.
And that those had not been successful, that we had followed the chain of command as dictated by Commissioners. And Jim, I understand that you want to be involved when they escalate to a certain level, but just as, as you are busy, I am, and, and I expect my staff to be able to put this stuff in into the right chain, and it either gets addressed or not, and-
Doug, a courtesy call between you and I takes a few seconds. Takes a few seconds.
Jim, I, I can't get through to you-
As soon as I said Doug, I meant Tim, I apologize.
With respect, Jim. Last night, okay, we were having email conversation at five o'clock last night-
Sure.
And I called you, your office twice.
And Sandy responded to you for me because I was working on stuff.
And I asked, and I speak to Jim, and I was told no. So, with respect, just last night-
I was, but it was after you did this stuff, after you called the Development Department.
So, you were playing a petty game with me. You just said, pick up the phone call.
I was in other stuff, I had Sandy respond to you on my behalf. Now, wait a minute. It's like the judge sitting in the courtroom and having you give a response to something. I was busy with other stuff and I paid you the courtesy to get you an answer. I was busy with other stuff, but I did not, not pay you the courtesy to get you an answer immediately when you called over. I couldn't take the call then, I was working on other stuff.
With respect, Jim.
You keep saying with respect, but I don't really feel that respect.
I'm talking to you and I'm, I'm-
I just don't feel it, Doug.
Well-
Uh, uh, Tim, okay?
I would suggest that the way I'm talking to you is quite different than the way you're talking to me.
Because you, you know, you're making accusations, you made an accusation again-
You're making one now, Jim.
You did call over. Did you receive a response from my office?
I didn't, your words-
Did you receive a response from my office? Why don't you just answer that question?
I did, Jim.
Did you receive a response from my office?
And, and your response was from Sandy. I then picked up the phone twice to call your office and got no response.
I was working on something else. Sandy came in and gave it to me, and I said, Sandy, tell Doug this, okay?
Tim.
Tim, I don't know why I'm saying Doug, I apologize.
Okay.
The, the, with all due respect, okay, the, the, you know, the, the issue here is one that you received a response from my office. I didn't say, Sandy, tell Doug I can't talk, I told him I can't talk to him, don't respond to him. You received it. Why? Because you didn't talk to me personally? I was actually in with somebody and trying to facilitate several different things at the same time and give you an answer.
Okay.
Okay.
My point-
You're as frustrated as Ms. Johnson is with Brentwood Lake right now. Um, this isn't going to get resolved here today. Maybe we can find new ways of doing things, like I said.
My point would be-
At least if there is an issue with things that are not getting done-
Sure.
You need an answer as to if it's going to get done, if it's not going to get done, if it's, you know, going to be a while, if it's a money issue or an employee issue, you know, we, we know we have those issues. You know, we've been talking about, you know, getting a, a, a note or a, a bond out for facility improvements, because we've been neglecting them for a long, long time because of our money situation, so, um, and our employees were spread very, very thin. And even Mr. Cortez is spread very, very thin, because he's got three Commissioners sending them off in three different directions, he's down in Brentwood Lake. I mean, who does that? I mean-
Thank you. Um, but yeah, if you could put in writing, you know, as far as the maintenance items that you need, the personnel issues that you've had, I mean, because it, it, it does, we do need to have a professional relationship. The employees need to be professional with, uh, the different departments. And, um, any suggestions on how you think it would make it work better? We'll take a look at it, and then, uh, we can get back to you. But let the judges know that we are going to be talking about getting notes to do the maintenance of the facility, because it hasn't been done for years.
Okay.
And I just don't know what we'll have to do with the courthouse, Doug, I gotta be honest with you. And why'd I call you, Doug? Tim, I'm sorry, Jim.
Soon as I started.
Yes, soon as you started, I'm sorry, Tim. Uh, I don't know what we're going to have to do with that courthouse, though, because it needs major, major repairs.
The old courthouse.
The old courthouse, yes, I, there once, Justice Center.
And I don't, and I honestly, I don't, the initial assessment, I had staff look at it, and, and they said, well, this is our, our thoughts, but they're not thinking that we're, we're spending a lot of, in fact, any major renovations.
Okay, that's what I was asking, is your opinion with your people who have to work there, so.
We, we thought we were going to take it to the next level, get Karen's assessment, whether or not there's any structural requirements, there, there may not be.
What's the issue with them being in the Columbia Gas building? Why do you want to make that move?
Physically, they're, they're, they report to one person and they're physically in a different building. And so, I mean, I don't honestly know why we never contemplated the movement up to the second floor originally. I, I wish I knew, um, but it was never an ideal situation to have two departments physically separated.
I think you guys picked that at the time, though, Tim.
They, they did pick it, and I moved-
They picked it, that's why we put them over there.
And, and I moved a whole bunch of people out of there to make that happen, and now we're looking at another move. Okay, the, the, uh-
If, if this isn't a win-win, Commissioners, then tell us that. Again, this is an idea-
Well, we don't know that, we don't know this.
You may have been told that, but after I figured out exactly what you wanted last night, and I did get clarity on what you wanted, I haven't had a chance to talk to them.
Okay.
This is the first we've heard of it.
The, the, uh, I had, I had no understanding of exactly what you wanted, you did communicate with me, uh, for now on, I won't have Sandy give you an answer, I'll just take a message and put it on my stalk of 42 other messages and-
But, but based on exactly that, do you understand that that doesn't result in effective communication?
I, I understand that, but I understand you can wait in line with the other 42 people that called. I tried to get you an answer immediately, you took exception to how you got the message. I, you know, I-
I sent you a message on October 12th.
You sent me an email on October 12th?
Yes.
I know, I got it. And I didn't, I didn't have the time to deal with it.
Okay.
Now, I don't, I don't know how your schedule is, but it wasn't a complete urgency to me until I had an idea of what you wanted, to worry about whether we're moving people out of this building over to that building. It was, you know, several larger issues pending in front of that.
And I didn't see this as a big issue, quite candidly. I, I-
Well, you must, you're standing here talking about it.
Well, because I, okay, Jim.
Again, Tim, if you could just give us that information, we'll take a look at it.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Commissioners. Have a good day.
You too. Anybody else want to come up and have fun with us today? Oh, my, all right. Move we go into executive session is outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Hi.
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. Taylor.
Hi.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. copy of the agenda.